Call the meeting to order. Stand to first listen. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, uh, welcome anyone who is, uh, joining the meeting by Zoom or by phone, um. Roll call, please.
Herman Lane.
Here.
Vinnie.
Here.
Maloney, absent and excused. Mynell.
Here.
White.
Here.
Zhang.
Here.
Siegler.
Here.
Okay, public comments, um. I have a two here that, uh, Jim Penasol, if you want to come up and make your.
Uh, Jim Penasol, by the way, to Arrow Street Weston. Just wanted to address the board this evening, um, regarding to, I've got a construction project happening on the corner of Mountview and Schofield Ave. Uh, there's weight limits on the road right now, which I understand, and I understand that they're for reason and respect that. Uh, there are two entrances to my, my parcel, one from Schofield Avenue on off of Mountview, approximately 187 feet from my corner of Schofield Ave and Mountview. We're on a very tight, uh, timeline for this project, uh, sometimes of the essence. Uh, and if we can get started on the project sooner than the, the roll limits are off, uh, would be very beneficial to our project. Uh, like I said, there's two axes to, um, the parcel. Uh, so one option would be to close at least one lane of Schofield Ave off for hours to offload an excavator and, uh, a bulldozer to get onto the parcel, uh, which would cause a great impact to the community and close down Main Thoroughfare. Uh, the other option would be to, uh, break that rule limit or get a variance on that for that 187 feet to use the access that I have on Mountview Ave. So just asking for your guidance on that.
Questions?
I, uh, my only question is for, uh, Director Wodolski. Um, would that, would a variance for that one lane substantially inhibit, um, the weight limits, uh, uh, the weight limit during that time?
I mean, a, a, a one-time permit just to get like an excavator unloaded, I wouldn't have an issue with.
Okay.
No, but so I guess, yeah, if, if that's the question is just to get
just to get it, getting equipment on site so it's not breaking ground, not, not to count eighty, eighty quad axle dump trucks full of fill, that's my intent.
Yeah.
Just to get ground for a roll pin.
So it would be in, it wouldn't just be one piece of equipment, it would be several.
I believe there would be two to three, two for sure, an excavator and a duller, I don't know if there's a third, I, I'm not the excavator, uh, on the project.
I, I think that the Public Works Department can take care of that issue as far as I can sense. It really is not on the agenda. We couldn't take any action.
We can say three questions because it's not on the agenda.
This young man right there.
Girls, thank you.
Better off talking to the, thank you. All right. Uh, minutes of previous meetings, um, item four, two fifteen, twenty-one, regular meeting. And then number five is two fifteen. Board of Trustees, closed session. What's your pleasure?
Moves to approve four and five.
That's, oh, I'm sorry, second by Ziegler, I didn't hear. On the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, thank you. Reports, minutes from boards, um, ten.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. What's your pleasure?
Motion to acknowledge items ten, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Second.
Second by Juan. On the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Reports from departments, administrator. Okay, well, we'll flirt. Do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything to add unless you have questions.
Okay, any questions for the court? Right, uh, finance, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, any questions?
Right.
Twenty-four, parks and recreation, anything to add?
No, nobody.
Any questions? All right. Twenty-five, planning and development, anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
All right.
Any questions?
Okay, all right, bye.
Um, police?
Nothing to add.
Any questions? We're moving right along here. I'm gonna ask, I skipped by because it's not in blue. Fire EMS, did you have anything you wanted to add to anything?
I did not have a formal report as I was out of town. Um, however, station two looks fantastic. There's a couple punchless things, but everything is coming together. They put the couple final things in today, so very exciting stuff there and, uh, otherwise it's pretty much status quo.
All right, any questions? Okay, thank you. I, I know you didn't have reports, but sometimes you like to add something to it. Uh, public works? Anything to add?
No, um, I'll probably jinx it though and just say, you know, the, the salt has been, uh, a huge savings so far this year. So you can tell me when it snows for the next four weeks, but, uh, you know, right now we're about hu- hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars under where we were last year as far as, well, just here salt material, so that's you think about overtime and everything else, we're probably doing pretty well so far this winter.
Second winter is right around the corner now.
Yep, you're on.
Any questions? Okay, technology, anything to add?
Nothing to add to my report.
Any questions? All right.
Mr. Donner.
Um, oh yes, Mr. Donner, we went past you, you were, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, it's okay, I was thinking a couple attorney media matter that's on the agenda later, so I apologize. Um, I don't know anything to add. Just to point out that I mentioned some, uh, points about the upcoming bid opening for the, uh, public, uh, facilities. So one thing we will be doing, because it's been put in the bid specs and we didn't really anticipate that to be that way, but we'll be getting a number on these smaller garage in the, uh, in the, in the scheme of things. Since it's in a bid package, I guess I thought the award's gonna be out, you know, that, that's out there. If we'd have gone back to what had been recommended and, you know, there may have been concerns that we, you know, did something at the last minute here. So I think in the interest of transparency, we just left it that way.
But why wasn't it discussed that with the trustees or?
Say what? Well, well, I guess we had our we had the last meeting on one day. I, I didn't, I didn't know it until we had the bid, the pre-bid meeting. So that's, you know, I guess it's on me and.
Well, so the architect did it or?
The architect put it in the bid package despite our having adopted the resolution that we weren't gonna do that. So I guess we talked about taking it out and then after considering it overnight, just felt it would be just as well to leave it in. We could still take it out.
I just, I'm just disappointed. I, I was, I voted against bidding large buildings because I think it's a, it's a a large building and very expensive for, for the village. Um, to find out that the architect just did that, um, and, and I don't know what the results were or why he made that decision. When that wasn't his authority from what was approved at the one meeting that we had was to send out the bigger bid, that, or the bigger building, um. It just seems like he's backpedaling a little bit, trying to still salvage his name on this, this construction and I just don't, I just don't like how it's evolving. Just doesn't seem as transparent as what it should be.
Just to clarify, a building committee and the board wanted an alternate bid on the smaller office with alert with the garage of the size that had been recommended. A larger, a larger garage. Full-size garage that takes care of all of our equipment. The alternate that was eliminated in discussion with building committee was the small garage because it doesn't serve our needs.
Correct.
Was that, is that what you're?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But, but to have the architect make a decision on what the priorities are or should be, could be, um, I'm just saying that the village trustees should be involved in that process. It shouldn't be left up to an architect to decide what's gonna be bid. I think that went through what was approved at the village, by the village trustees, was the bid that, the one built in period. And that's what was my expectation, find out that he's also bidding a smaller one, which we didn't spend any time on, or not what I feel was sufficient time on. It just, it just doesn't sit right.
So in the, I guess we can just eliminate it then.
I'm one voice. I'm just, I'm voicing my concerns with it. I'm just one voice.
Anybody else?
I also had, had concerns that are we paying additionally for this?
No, you're not.
There's nothing additional that we're paying. We just didn't know what was happening.
Until we discovered after, so after discussing with the architect about some of the bid, uh, the bidding schedule and so forth after the pre-bid. I guess easily I could have caught it by looking more and more detail in the plans. But I know when we talked at the building committee meeting and whatnot, it was, that was eliminated from the plans. I don't know if Director Wodolski has any other insight on that, but, um.
No, I mean, we had the alternates and the architect just, you know, I think just through the process, there were the, the, the base building, the base building with the smaller office and then the base building with the smaller garage. And through the iterations through the building committee, you know, you missed taking out the smaller garage as part of the bid package. The initial plans that we got to review that went to the state for approval just had the base building on it because that's all that needed to be submitted to the state at the time for approval, so, um, when the bid plans went out, that's when we realized it had the second alternate in there. So, I mean, at that point, like you said, the, that had the smaller garage as an alternate in there. It's still an alternate. Um, so, I mean, we can take it out or you just leave it in there since it is already out there and people start looking at it, so.
I'm, I can't put my, myself in the architect's head, but I think considering all the back and forth we had in the building committee, I think he was anticipating that perhaps we, the bids might come in too hard for the full plan is submitted and he wanted to have it ready so that we actually had for hard figures between the two structures. So we were guessing and had to put it out to bits again. Guessing, not being in the architect's head, that's the only thing I can figure we might have done that. I think it was all the discussion that took place, um. That's just, I guess, in the, in the scheme of things, the resolutions adopted did not ask for that alternate. So if, if you, if I should be compliant with those resolutions, we'll remove them.
Well, I mean, that's what we voted on.
Right. We voted on it for that night and, and I, once again, I voted against it because I think it's being overbuilt. I just don't like this feeling that he's shopping a smaller building now. It's, it's not the idea of setting up this fifteen million dollars for him to figure out how to build a building. That's not the process up here and I, and all the way along here, I thought that there should have been more trustee involvement in it, not just saying here, this is what the building is gonna be built and it, you know, I think the contract originally was like eleven to twelve million, something like that, from February of, uh, twenty twenty. Then turned into this larger number and now we're bidding it out and we're getting a smaller building bid also, just in case. It, it just seems that the process is being.
The smaller number was from?
Two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
I think Wally Sparks, uh, signed the contract February of, uh, twenty twenty that addressed a specific dollar amount. That was in one of the email.
For the, actually, for the architects.
Right.
Um, architects.
Original contract.
Contract.
Because originally when it was done, it was.
No, but it was, it was something that was signed last year. So we, we've inched up and now we're inching back on the size of the building and I'm just saying that it seems like we're being coerced into a, a, a building that we really haven't seen anything on. We didn't spend a lot of time in the building committee.
That was gonna be my only concern on the smaller garage. We really didn't.
Right.
Search that because we decided it wasn't going to address the issues that we have.
Right.
Garage and that we want them to do it.
Right, and, and, but that was the discussions that we had then to not spend any more energy on it because it's not gonna solve the problems. To find out that that's gonna be part of our bidding process now, it just seems that it's, it's not the right format or the right way of pursuing this new building.
What would you suggest?
I, I don't know. I don't like this feeling that I have right now is that there's an open chuckle.
Let's just, sure, this is the. Pull the alternate.
Getting into discussions, uh, in action on something that's not specifically on the agenda. I'm just voicing my concern that I don't like what's being presented here. I wish there was more control of it, on it.
To an administrator, Donner said, uh, we can just pull the alternate, let's pull the alternate and, you know, move on. That wasn't part of the resolution.
Can we do that? I would think that's what our resolution was.
If, if we would. I, I don't think we can because it's a specific action item that would require something on the agenda.
I, I don't think so either. There's nothing on the, this agenda that says that action is gonna maybe take in any, on any, um, agenda item either, so. But then I guess the, the next question I would ask is that, if, that could be something that staff could just pull on their own, still without direction from, um.
Correct.
Right.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Because we passed the resolution, you know.
Even, even though we as a board can't vote on it, I think that the sentiment is pretty clear that, you know, we, that we agree that it should just be pulled.
Our old resolution.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I shared a version of the video that we're planning to put up on the website as well, so we're working on some final edits to that relative to the project. And, uh, I guess I'd like to also put out some additional information on the financial effects since there seems to be some question out there about some of the, uh, financial aspects. Obviously, we would know more if we had a hard number, but we would not have that until next Tuesday. I guess aside from that, I don't have anything else to add to my report. Unless you have questions on what's in there.
Any questions from Mr. Donner? So work projects.
Move to acknowledge items twenty through twenty-two, twenty-four through twenty-eight.
Second.
Second by Nate. Is that Nate?
Yeah.
Second by Nate. On the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. All right, now work project transmittals, February building permits.
Moves to acknowledge?
Acknowledge or approve?
Acknowledge.
Okay.
I can never remember what that one.
Yeah, that's what I, because you're actually, okay. Motion by Nate to acknowledge?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Steve. On the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Consent agenda, uh, item thirty, is there anything anybody would like to have pulled out? Okay, then item, uh, thirty-one vouchers, thirty-two second-hand article dealers, thirty-three cigarette license, thirty-four mobile food vendor, appointment of Brian Edwards, thirty-seven purchases banners. What, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Nate?
By John, actually.
It was John?
Yeah, it was John. He said something, I just raised my hand.
Okay.
Can we clarify which items you're acknowledging or approving?
Moving to, uh, moving to approve thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight. So action on consent by.
Thank you.
All right, there's motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Ordnances. Number twenty-one dash zero zero six to approve the zoning of a parcel of land from AR Agricultural to residential to B three general business and RR five rural residential five zoning district located at eighty-one oh one County Road J. What's your pleasure?
Moves to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero six, a rezone request for eighty-one oh eight County Road J for planning commission recommendation.
Motion by White, second by Nate. Nate? On the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Forty-one, resolution twenty, twenty-one dash zero zero five, essential assessments. What's your pleasure?
Moves to approve?
Motion by Nate?
Second.
Second by White?
Uh, question for Director Wodolski?
Yep.
Uh, these are just the, um, the driveway, uh, uh, the driveway improvements, correct?
Just, yeah, just the driveway approach between will be kind of the back of the shoulder and the sidewalk.
Okay. And how much did that come to about per household?
Based, this project that I'll be finishing up here, it's about sixteen hundred dollars per driveway.
Over ten years?
Over.
Doing ten years?
Then, yeah, it's usually a standby period of ten years.
Okay. One, hundred and sixty bucks a year.
Something like that, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Forty-two, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six, uh, proposed amendment to Stonegate condominium plot. What's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six to approve of amendment number three to Stonegate condominium's per planning commission recommendation.
Motion by White, second. Second by Siegler. On the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Unfinished business, Tiff Pago agreement with Tommy Dock Products LLC for the purchase of village-owned land and development of a building for product assembly, warehousing, display, and sales at eighty-six oh eight Progress Way. What's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve the Tiff Pago land sale and development agreement for Tommy Dock's Products LLC. As presented and authorized, the village president to sign a resolution approving the land sale consistent with the terms of the development agreement prior to the closing on the land sale.
Second.
Second by Nate? On the question?
On the question? Village attorney Edie has, uh, asked that we add a sentence on page, around paragraph three, page nine. To the effect, or specifically if the developer has not received the total amount of the tax increment grant by March thirty-one, twenty thirty-one, uh, village has no obligation to pay any further amounts.
That's thirty-one?
What is it? It would be the tid closure date, whether that's March one or March thirty-one?
It's March of twenty thirty-one.
March twenty thirty-one, so we're just saying March first. Any payments would have been made by January, is that here anyway?
That would require an amendment to the motion.
I'll make the motion to amend, uh, to make the amendment as, uh, said by, um, Administrator Donner.
At the voice of.
At the voice of council.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, motion to amend by John, seconded by Vinnie?
So you're voting on the amendment.
All right, we're gonna hold on the, as, you know.
Vote the amendment person in the motion as amendment.
Yes. Okay, um, what's your pleasure?
Aye.
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 Oh, we both, aye.
Okay.
I have a question on, on the original motion. Um, it talks about having full, ten full-time equivalents. Talks about a certain building being, um, built. I guess it said with a designated date of January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. But my understanding is that plan hasn't been developed nor, or hasn't been approved, nor has the, um, dollar amount been tied in anywhere. So if, if, if the agreement is saying this building has to be built, that was brought in on the twenty-sixth, it doesn't say how much is gonna be going into this project. It doesn't guarantee what's gonna happen if those ten employees aren't being hired. I'm just curious on how how we have any teeth in that. I, I'm, I'm for the plan, don't misunderstand me, I'm for the plan, but I'm just curious on some of the details in the agreement. And the same thing, I, I forget what page it was on there. It talked about, um, I think it was non-incumbre in the property, which I don't know if that's happening or not, but it, it, it talks about us being able to repurchase it if that was to happen, but we're not interested in that. And I know we had questions on one of the other projects recently as far as how we were gonna proceed with, you know, um, creditors and that type of thing. So I guess my point is, I'm for the pro, I'm for this project to happen, I just don't know these things that aren't being addressed in the agreement, why they're not. I just want clarification on that.
So first of all, the for the project um, was was, uh, predicated, I guess, on their preliminary plans submitted that were dated January twenty-sixth. I know there's a final plan that has yet to be adopted. The, there's a, the agreement discusses that the final plans need to be, um, they need to be as, as present, than presented in our preliminary, substantially like that, I believe is the, or some, some effect in the agreement.
But it doesn't specify that in the, in the agreement, so that's why I'm questioning this. I think it's a great project, don't misunderstand me, but I'm just saying that I don't know why we wouldn't say if the ten full-time equivalents aren't being hired, this is what the repercussions to that are. We should say that if the building isn't in the amount of.
It does.
To miss it, it subtracts the.
That we, as far as the penalty, six thousand dollars per FTE.
It's reduced.
But we're still obligated though to fit, to, to, to pay the dollar amount. Is that correct?
Deduct for not, for non-compliance with the FTE equivalent, they get deducted from their, their.
Six thousand per year or six thousand overall?
Per, per FTE.
Per FTE.
For one year that we're making the payments.
Every year that they don't make the goal.
We're making payments to him and a certain dollar amount based on the increased value of the fee.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if he doesn't measure up with the ten employees over that, or excuse me, um, for the ten years, do we still make those payments or do we deduct six thousand per year per employee?
It gets, it's, my understanding is when, or if he doesn't make the commitments to do the FTE, it's deducted by the amount he fails to make the FTE.
Per employee per year.
Per employee per year.
So if he only hires two, he loses out on forty-eight thousand dollars every year.
And we're paying him what, thirty-eight thousand per year?
Up to, it's up to seventy-five percent of the increment. So he, if he doesn't, he doesn't, if he doesn't make the increment he's estimated, that justifies the three seventy-five, three seventy-six. It'll be adjusted if he was. But it wouldn't be more than what's in here. I mean, if he could create more.
And if he doesn't build the building to a certain dollar amount, where, where, where's the penalty for that?
He just doesn't get, he doesn't achieve the increment that, that has been that, that's estimated that would support the amount, the maximum amount that's in this agreement. It'd be a maximum of seventy-five percent of that. That's, um, in the definition of and it's also consistently it's in that memorandum of agreement as well that was, uh, adopted last meeting.
See, that's under definitions.
Increment.
I must register ten times.
Yeah, I know, it's not as straightforward as. There it is, uh, W.
That's the amount, that's our allocation.
Talks about the seventy-five percent of it all too. All the way here. Tax increment percentage means seventy-five percent. That's in double for CC.
What, what page are you on, Keith, I'm sorry?
It's right there, page four, on page one seventy-three of the packet.
I'm not, I'm just not comfortable with the agreement, I guess, I don't have a clear enough understanding of. I'm, I'm all for the project, don't misunderstand me, it just seems like this doesn't have the details in it that I would like to see. Or easily understand the details, I guess. And Matt had reviewed it?
Yes.
Was there any concerns?
How many have was that, I guess, that's just, uh, this is a, this is a form of agreement that's been prepared by the bond council from Quarles and Brady for this very purpose. So I, I know the Matt's reviewed the other ones, the same form of agreement he used for PGA, uh, Oakley River LLC. And I guess.
It seems like.
As we talked to you and I, and I guess, we're at a point with our TIFs that we are probably, that we probably don't even want to use this type of agreement anymore based on their financial situation. And we might be looking more at direct grants instead of these paid arrangements. Because we only have till twenty twenty-six on our, on our expenditure period and twenty thirty-one quarter, so. We may not be seeing another one.
Um, I'm going to call for the question, move to call for the question, second.
Motion, second, call for the question, however, John was, and stand up.
It would be out of order there, Mr. John, we can make a comment.
Yeah, I, I just want to, thank you, thank you, manager, I just want to, uh, I guess, jump on the question that, um, uh, Tristan Manello mentioned, um, you know, uh, her attorney viewed, uh, reviewed it, uh, was there any other than that phrase that he mentioned? Was there any other objections or any concerns that he had?
No, he just, um, clarified, he said that the only questions were related to that, but termination of the tid and then having that clause in there to, to, uh, make it clear that we were not obligated to pay at the end of twenty thirty-one.
And your motion to amend included that in the second amendment.
Yes. I just, I just wanted to clarify, I think, Steve, if there was any other concerns that the attorney they have, they have.
Okay, please, I guess we had a vote for, vote, um, I gotta stop and think, did, we had a motion, a second on, as, on the amendment.
To call the question.
Right?
Yes.
And then there was a, so, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What are we voting for?
Yeah, because the amendment passed.
Right.
So now we're voting on the call to question.
Actually, the.
No, because there was a question.
Call for the question was ruled out of order because.
Oh.
Because John had a comment, so we're back to voting on the.
Motion as, as amended.
Yes, that's where I was at, I thought.
Well, it took me a while to work through that.
Okay, okay, we have a motion, we need a motion.
No.
To amend.
Nope.
We already did that.
We already did that, okay, then we have a motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended. Do I have a motion to that?
We, we already have that.
Oh, yeah, okay, so then it's just straight to the vote.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Please note that my, my Nell, not Myron, my Nell.
Sorry.
Opposed? Right. Okay, are we done with that one?
We're under new business now.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I didn't have to have anything else on that.
That's all right.
Yeah, new business, forty-four, engineering contract for Burke Street. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve the Burke Street, Shorey Avenue to Cross Point reconstruction engineering design contract to Baker Hoppy in the amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred.
Second.
By White, second by Nate.
I just, I just want to make a comment, um, I want to thank staff for, uh, going through a, uh, RFP. It's greatly appreciated, well, but it makes, it means, it makes me happy to see that we're saving our taxpayers money as well.
Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Forty-five, engineering contact for Weston Avenue Reconstruction Project on X and J.
Move to approve.
Motion by Nate.
Second.
Second by White. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Forty-six, engineering contract amendment for Ryan Street Apache Lane River Crossing Project.
Move to approve.
Motion by Nate.
I'll second that.
Second, Steve, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Forty-seven, WPS easement in Business Park North, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve the easement request from WPS for a twelve-foot wide easement for the underground electrical facilities from the far east end of Commerce Drive, south for approximately two hundred and eighty feet.
In motion by White, second, second by Seigler, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Forty-eight, twenty twenty budget amendments and creation of a new special revenue fund, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the twenty twenty budget amendments and creation of a new special revenue fund for public safety grants.
Motion by Nate.
I'll second that.
Second by Steve, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Forty-nine, purchase of replacement log slice floes.
To approve.
Motion by Nate.
Second.
Second by John, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Purchase of replacement safety pads.
Move to approve.
Motion by Nate.
Second.
Second by John, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Attorney referrals, any? Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session for nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E.
Move to enter, uh, into closed session.
Yeah, you want to go.
Uh, move to enter into closed session, uh, per, uh, per state statute nineteen eighty-five parent one, parent E for the deliberation or negotiation, the, of the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business with a competitive or bargaining reasons that require closed session, specifically the proposed, proposed land trade with gold key investments for properties in wandering springs and wandering springs west flats.
Yeah, I never wrote, okay, second by White. Roll call, Ermling.
Aye.
Feeny.
Aye.
Mynell.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Seigler.
Aye.
Aye.
Did I miss you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ermling.
Aye. Okay, we.
We are in a session.
A session, yeah.
Okay, we, um, are now in open session, um, so, of what item, how, do we have a motion?
Uh, I move that, um, that we give the party until, uh, Friday at noon to turn over the quitclaim deeds or the village will pursue this action in the court of law.
Motion, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by John, on the court.
My question, just to clarify the quitclaim deeds for the two outlets.
Yes, for the two outlets on.
For refuse for, for the right of way for wandering springs west.
Thank you.
Flat.
Those words exactly.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Okay, remarks from trustees.
I have nothing, thank you.
Steve, John, Nate, Steve.
No.
I have nothing, um, future items, meeting April nineteenth at six o'clock and then May seventeenth at six o'clock. See, is there, the now sign here, is it missing?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, made by Nate.
I'll second that.
Second by Mynell. Mynell, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we're, opposed at seven oh one.
Thank you. For a three hundred and one-page agenda, that was pretty quick, I had to go past.